Councilmember Remi, would you read the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we are honored to have Father Lutz, Senior Pastor at St. Mary's Catholic Church, pray over council. Father, welcome to council. Thank you so much for being here with us.
God whispers to us in our joys. God speaks to us in his silence. God shouts to us in our pain. May we hear him always and receive his message with faith, hope, and love. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, bless this city and bless those chosen men and women who are its leaders. May they always be responsive to the needs of the community. May they live examples of generous living and may they inspire those who work with them for the common good. Bless the first responders of our great city. Protect them always in every difficulty. Bring them safely home and let those to whom they reach out in dramatic rescues and moments of crisis always find relief and help in time of need. Grant us, Lord, to be like a true family in this city. Let the stronger always help those who are weaker. Let those who are able to reach out for those in crisis, hardship, and in need. Like a true family, change our hearts. Inspire them to love and to always be forgiving. Destroy any barriers in this family and wash away all resentments. We ask you, Lord, to purify every motive for the sake of the common good. And may the blessings that you send descend upon us all, not missing anyone, especially those in need. Make us always pleasing in your sight. And by the unseen power of your grace, let there be a light which is shining in this city. A light that tells people this is a town of goodness, of godliness, generosity, hope, and help. Let this shining light be visible to us all. Grant this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you, Father. Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remi, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden. Any person who takes any actions to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Can I get a motion dispensed with the reading of the journal? Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remi, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be written to the record?
Not this time.
Are there any resolutions by council members? Councilmember Elizabeth Brown, councilmember Mitch Brown, councilmember Emmanuel Remi.
No resolutions, but I'd like to remind or announce that we are having two public hearings on October 2nd and October 4th for discovering a litter-free Columbus. One is going to be at Dodge Recreation and the other at Linden Recreation Center. So we will be making those available, that information available, but wanted to let everybody know those will be on October 2nd and October 4th from 6:00 to 7:30. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Page.
Thank you, President Harden. I do have a resolution this evening, Resolution 0272X-2018, and I would like to call Susan Farnham, board member of the Ohio Suicide Prevention Foundation, to the podium. And this evening again, Resolution 0272X-2018, to recognize September as National Suicide Prevention Month and to honor the Ohio Suicide Prevention Foundation for their advocacy and increasing awareness. And I'll just read a couple of paragraphs from my resolution. The Ohio Suicide Prevention Foundation, launched in 2005, was determined to bring about changes in perceptions regarding the negative connotation attached to suicide, mental illness, alcohol and drug abuse and addiction. And the mission of OSPF is to act as a catalyst and steward of statewide suicide prevention efforts by supporting community-based efforts to reduce stigma, promote education and awareness about suicide prevention, and increase resources and programs to reduce the risk of lives lost to suicide. And I would first like to move for adoption of this resolution.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remi, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Thank you, Ms. Farnham. The floor is now yours.
We want to take this opportunity to thank you, to bring awareness to suicide prevention. Our board is an all-volunteer board and we have a whopping staff of two who does all the work, and we thank you for honoring them too. It is Shawna Height-Jones is our program director and Austin Lucas is our grant coordinator.
I just wanted to say thank you as well. My name is Austin Lucas. I'm the grant coordinator for the Ohio Suicide Prevention Foundation, and I just want to say that we will continue to provide free education, training, and programs and resources to all Ohioans.
Thank you both for coming down this evening. Are there any additional comments from my colleagues? Again, thank you, and thank you for the work that you're doing around our state.
Thank you. Excuse it. President Protam.
Thank you, President Harden. At this time, I'd like to invite representatives from the Boy Scouts of America to come down to the podium. As I introduce Resolution 0277X-2018 to celebrate the 100th anniversary of Boy Scout Troop 28 located in Clintonville, as well as the Boy Scouts contributions to the city of Columbus. I know we're normally used to seeing Gin Coma. She wasn't feeling, she's under the weather today, so we have other representatives who will be able to introduce themselves. But as you can imagine, 100 years of scouting in Clintonville area started in 1918 when we had 12 boys enrolled in the program and has just grown. I think we all recognize their ongoing commitment and also the work that the Boy Scouts in central Ohio have done on our west side and really looking to engage some youth that may not have had opportunities in our commitment to the Wedgwood community and the Hilltop area. So with that, I'll turn the podium over to you all for introductions and any comments.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Councilman Stenziano. My name is Johnny Davis. I'm one of the district executives for the Simon Kinney Council. I'm here in Columbus, Ohio for the Scout Reach District.
My name's Megan Rivers. I'm a district director for the Scout Reach and different districts within the Simon Kinney Council, including exploring.
Awesome. So first of all, I would like to thank you and all of our council representatives for recognizing and supporting our scouting program and the role that you guys play in preparing our young people for their future. The financial support that the city is providing for our outreach efforts of the Hilltop area and the Wedgwood community will continue to make a difference in the lives of so many youth that we serve. Kids in these hard-to-serve communities deserve every opportunity to grow and achieve, and we know that that's not always possible. You guys have provided a lot of financial assistance to our scouts and our families. Thank you so much for our partnerships with the organizations serving our Muslim and Somali families. We are always able to provide this scouting program to kids where they are in hard-to-reach areas, and we provide positive mentorship, development, life skills, learning, citizenship, and the approach for our outdoors and the opportunity to contribute positively to our communities.
With your significant contribution, a lot of our kids in the hard-to-serve areas are able to participate in activities such as Pinewood Derby. We're able to send them to camp. They get to go to STEM camp, and they're also able to learn different initiatives, including a part of our STEM program, which includes our rocket launching and different activities that boys and girls those ages enjoy.
So thank you all for your support.
Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you, President Protam-Stenziano. I just, I want to say thank you for the work of just of scouting and certainly the work that you're doing and certainly serving markets or communities that may not typically have been had scouting in, so I thank you for that. But it's really important that our young people have the opportunity to be able to be in scouting because of the mentorship that they receive and that, you know, oftentimes a young person just really does need, needs to have someone that's not their parent or the teacher, a different person to be able to pour into them to help them to move forward. So I really do appreciate the work of scouting, Boy Scouts, I'm no focusing them today, but just of scouting. It's just, it's very, very important, and oftentimes, young people don't have the opportunity to say thank you or even their parents to say thank you, but you certainly are an integral part of moving our young people forward. And so I thank you for the work and your leadership.
Councilmember Remi.
Thank you very much, President Protam-Stenziano. As the father of a Weeblo, PAC number 613, and want to thank you and echo the comments that my colleague, Councilmembers Tyson just said. It's very important for both boys and girls now to have the opportunity to learn and explore and learn all that scouting brings to the table, and so appreciate all your work and very much in the throes of popcorn sales time right now. So I haven't hit my colleagues up yet, but I've got an order for them for you. So anyway, thank you so much, and we appreciate you coming down tonight.
Thank you.
Again, thank you all, and a big congratulations to 28 on their tremendous milestone.
Seeing no further comments, I'll move for adoption. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remi, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Adopt it. Thank you, President Protam. Councilmember Tyson.
Yes, President Harden, I have one resolution, and I'm going to ask Chad Willington, the present CEO of Kappa, Alfie Devella, Deanna Pagan, and I think Lord Az is here too, to come towards to the podium. And this is Resolution Number 280X-2018. It's to recognize September the 15th through October 15th as Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Columbus, honoring the contributions of Hispanics in our community. And whereas September the 15th, October the 15th has been declared Hispanic Heritage Month, honoring the role that the Hispanics have played, continue to play in the economic, cultural, and social development of our nation. And whereas Hispanics make up a significant portion of the labor force, working as elected officials, CEOs, small business owners, entrepreneurs, homemakers, they also provide leadership, guidance, and support, values which strengthen our economy. And whereas Hispanics in Columbus are represented in almost every profession, they've established themselves as unique leaders, exceptional role models, and they have the distinction of being known as wise business owners who create jobs, pay living wages, while positively impacting the local economies of neighborhoods. These business owners, despite the many risks and perpetual and personal sacrifices they encounter, are inspirations to their families, employees, and community, and they are role models whose success stories can be learned from and emulated. And whereas Hispanics, when Hispanics succeed, our city, our state, our region, and our nation succeed. Their potential is limited only by the depth of one's imagination. Now therefore, be it resolved that the council of the city of Columbus, that this council hereby proclaims September the 15th through October 15th of 2018 as Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Columbus. Be it further resolved by the council of the city of Columbus, if this council does hereby express its grateful appreciation for the many accomplishments and contributions made by Hispanics in this community. Moreover, this council encourages each resident to learn more about the important role that they play in our history. I move for adoption.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remi, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. Chad, Deanna.
Well, thank you to city council for the opportunity to be a part of this tonight. Kappa believes strongly that an important part of our mission is to reach everyone in our community, and certainly our Hispanic community as a valuable part of that community. One of the ways in which we reach out to the Hispanic community is through Festival Latino that takes place here in Columbus each August. First of all, let me say I'm very appreciative to the city council for being a great partner to us on the festival, and this past August was the 10th year that Kappa has worked with the city to put on the festival. It was a great festival, bringing hundreds of thousands to Genoa Park over the festival weekend and culminating in an amazing performance by El Gran Combo on Sunday evening. Kappa also looks forward to increasing our connection to the Latino community beyond just the festival. And Deanna Pagan, our manager of diversity and inclusion, will speak to that.
Thank you for honoring Kappa in this way, and I just wanted to mention that Kappa is not only excited to receive this resolution from the city, but also excited to continue to share culture and arts in our community, whether it's through Fete de Latino or just bringing the arts to our stages. Most recently, we are excited to be bringing a film called Being Enye to the Lincoln Theater to basically talk about cultural identity. We are bringing in some students from Columbus City Schools to see this short documentary film at no cost. We're bringing in about 400 kids, and it'll be an opportunity for them to talk about cultural identity and have that, and have a safe space to have that conversation. Kappa is also looking forward to continuing to make the arts affordable and accessible and continuing to work with, with the community. So thank you, and we look forward to celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month September 15th through October 15th. Huepa!
Just briefly, we look forward to celebrating with you as well.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Again, I know that a number of us were able to attend Festival Latino, and it was just fabulous. The weather was, well, great on the one day, not so great as the other, but it was just a, it's just really amazing to see how this event has really grown, how their residents are only from Columbus coming to participate and to learn more about the diversity, but also just the people that come from all over Ohio and the Midwest to this major event. So I thank you for your leadership there. This year, certainly I have a, in my legislation, I will be passing legislation on that for the food plan that we were able to be this year, participate in Festival Latina, and it was so important for us to be able to be there because it does meet one of the goals of our local food action plan, and I'll speak to later when I pass, when we discuss legislation. But we appreciate the opportunity to have the different nonprofit organizations that join us in this work around food access to be a part of the festivals this year. So thank you for your ongoing leadership. I have an announcement in regards to the Commission on Black Girls. Last Thursday, we heard from the nonprofit organizations that work with our girls, and we also heard from parents later that evening. This Thursday, we'll be hearing from the girls, and so September the 27th, from six to eight, starting at 6 o'clock, will be at Columbus Public Health, 240 Parsons Avenue. If you are a girl between the ages of 11 to 22, we certainly would love to come out, for you to come out and share your voice with what is your current quality of life in the city of Columbus. And so again, we welcome all girls to have their voices heard for us to learn from them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. The vice chair of the North Linden Area Commission is here, Mr. Latham, and is asked to do a short presentation. Mr. Latham, welcome back to council.
Good evening, Council President Harden, President, or Protep, Mr. Stenziano, and the rest of council. What I want to propose to you guys this evening is each of you have a folder. As we prepare for the growth of Linden, we would, we feel that it is strong, a strong idea to move Precinct Two from Muck and Parkwood closer into our neighborhood, which would actually be on the north campus, city buildings on Caroline Avenue. I spoke with Commander Knight, Jennifer Knight, about some of the current facilities' needs, and we have an, right now, an inadequate building over on the Muck-Parkwood area. It's small, it's, also, I guess, the ventilation system is inadequate and often non-functional. Parking lot remains unpaved and cannot be properly maintained. Also, the parking lot can't be plowed in the winter, and the facility cannot be secured because the gate is not functional. Cruisers, personnel cars cannot be secured in the lot, and most importantly, the substation is not centrally located on the precinct it serves. If we would consider moving this, we could also serve parts of Clintonville as well. Most, let's see here, the Caroline Avenue city facility is in an excellent location. I'll give you a few reasons why. It's located on a, actually located on the second precinct and provides an excellent proximity to the area. It's centrally located on the zone, providing quick access to the freeway and every other precinct on the zone. As well, the basement will provide an excellent location for a centralized bike facility and all city bikes. And on that note, I would like to say how successful our Linden Safe Streets were this summer and actually last summer too, and we encourage council and the mayor to consider having this back next spring. And let's see here. I guess the parking lot, I personally haven't been in a while over there, but the parking lot is large enough to house second precinct vehicles and can support moving all midwatch units to that facility as well. The current placement of midwatch at Substation Two is inadequate because the substation cannot support officers, cruisers, or the officer's vehicles. The Caroline Avenue facility is an existing city facility that can be modified and outfitted with much less city expenditures than a new facility would cost. This would solve several logistical issues with a single location. Midwatch could be located there. I guess with 30 officers, two precinct officers could be placed in a central location, and this could provide the much-needed bike facility. New facility would take years and millions of dollars of taxpayer dollars, and if we moved to the Caroline Avenue area, it would save a lot of money. I do want to recognize an individual in our neighborhood. Vicki Johnson has been more than excited about this. She kick-started a signature drive. We have collected over 260 signatures right now, and that's from walking the streets and putting an online petition in our North Linden Area Discussion Group. So we feel, we would like to propose that council considers moving Substation Two from Muck Road and Parkwood over to Caroline Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Latham. I'm going to ask Chair Brown to be point for council to work with you and the commission on these conversations as you present it. I think each member of council has a packet as well as a packet provided to Director Speaks as well. So Councilmember Brown, will you be point on this? Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Latham.
All right, thank you.
Are there any comments by our elected officials or members of the administration? Are there any requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may we now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by city clerk? Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remi, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Finance Committee ordinance is 2306, 2392, and 2541-2018. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance is 2518 and 2564-2018. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 2367, 2421, 2443, and 2448-2018. Rules and Reference Committee ordinance 2546-2018. Zoning Committee ordinance is 2577 and 2358-2018.
Seeing no speakers signed up for the first reading, can the following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent actions? Will the clerk now read those ordinance numbers into the record?
Resolutions of Expression 278, 279, 276, and 281X-2018. Finance Committee ordinance is 2293, 2304, 2307, 2359, 2364, 2394, 2411, 2440, 2512-2018. Recreation and Parks Committee Resolution 266X-2018, ordinance is 1964 and 2464-2018. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance is 2234, 2337, 2388, 2414, 2496, and 2553-2018. Economic Development and Small Business Committee ordinance is 2442, 2445, and 2446-2018. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 2098, 2280, 2284, 2294, 2295, 2309, 2310, 2311, 2316, 2330, 2331, 2356, 2383, 2384, 2396, 2527, and 2529-2018. Health and Human Services Committee ordinance is 2165, 2397, and 2400-2018.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have one speaker on the consent action items, Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins, welcome back to council. Mr. Wilkins, can you state the resolution ordinance number you're speaking on?
26, 24, 2018. I just want to know what, 45,000? 45, 1612 Arlington Avenue, Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins, the chairman, solid vacant man of the party in North Linden Area. I would just like to see more money instead of 45,000 to up to 98,000. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Are there any additional questions or comments by members of my colleagues on the consent action portions of the agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion for approval of these items as named as consent actions by voice? Please call the row by voice.
Ms. Brown?
With the exception of 2388-2018, on which I abstain.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Remi?
Yes.
Stenziano?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes. Consent action carries. We will now move to, we will now proceed with the second reading, second reading of 30-day tabled emergency legislation. The first committee to come before council is the Finance Committee. Councilmember Elizabeth Brown is chair. Chair of the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. First up in finance, we have ordinance 2213-2018 to authorize the finance and management director to enter into a universal term contract for the option to purchase long-distance communication services with AT&amp;T, to authorize the expenditure of $1 from general budget reservation BRPO 000978, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of city code and to declare an emergency. The term of the proposed option contract is one year, and the total estimated expenditure is $35,000. All city agencies use long-distance services, and the Department of Technology is currently working with AT&amp;T on their voice-over-IP migration project, which is scheduled to be complete in 2019. Deputy Director Gian Guardella, can you briefly explain the waiver of competitive bidding for this contract?
Yes, as you stated, this is, I'm sorry, a president council, chair of round, members of council. As you stated, this is a one-year contract, and once the, the voice-over-IP project is completed with AT&amp;T, then- with AT&amp;T, then the Department of Technology will look to bid out next year a longer-term agreement for long-distance telephone services. And we expect that, that project to be completed probably within the next six months. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Excuse me, I move first to take from the table.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Paige, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Remove from table.
And I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Paige, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Next, we have ordinance two-four zero-six dash twenty-eighteen to authorize the Finance and Management Director to establish a purchase order for fuel and fueling services on behalf of the Fleet Management Division per the terms and conditions of a universal term contract with Wex Bank to authorize the expenditure of one million eight hundred thousand dollars from the Fleet Management Operating Fund and to declare an emergency. In 2017, the Fleet Management Division spent eight-point-four million dollars for unleaded and diesel fuels for approximately six thousand city vehicles, including police and fire vehicles. That comes out to about twenty-seven dollars per week per vehicle. This year, ten million was budgeted. Of that, four-point-five million has already been spent. This ordinance brings the total for the year to six-point-three million, which puts us at the exact spending mark of seven hundred thousand per month for fuel that we saw last year. Emergency action is being considered to ensure an uninterrupted supply of fuel for city vehicles. Are there any questions? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Paige, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Our final ordinance in finance tonight is two-four four-one dash twenty-eighteen to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into five universal term contracts for the option to purchase water meters, yokes, meter setters, and appurtenances, there we go, with Badger Meter Incorporated, Neptune Technology Incorporated, Metron Farnier LP, Master Meter Incorporated, and Core and Main LP to authorize the expenditure of five dollars from the general budget reservation B R P O zero-zero-zero-nine-seven-eight to waive the provisions of competitive bidding and to declare an emergency. The Division of Water is the primary user of these devices for the city's water distribution system. The term of the proposed contract is two years with the option to renew for five additional on a year-per-year basis. Eight bids were received in accordance with competitive bidding provisions, and the Purchasing Office recommended the lowest responsible bidders as reflected in the contract. Deputy Gian Guardella, can you explain why we need to waive competitive bidding?
President Harden, Chair Brown, members of council, two of the vendors, I believe it's Badger Meter and Neptune Technology bid alternate parts, but they, excuse me, but they will meet specifications, and the Division of Water is accepting of those. And it's unlikely, even if we were to bid those out, that we would have another vendor that would be able to provide us with those commodities at those prices. So we are requesting bid waiver on just those two vendors of the multi-point universal term contract. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yep.
Thank you, Chair. In terms of these, accepting new technology, in terms of the meter reader, we have a, an option to come back in two years to see. I just wonder with the pace of change with these new technologies, how often we can look at these new meters?
President Harden, is that, I'm just looking if that's a question for me or the utilities?
I will ask Director Davies to answer, to speak to that.
President Harden, Chair Brown, members of council, yes, we are moving forward with automated meter reading. We don't have a timetable for that schedule yet. We still have to put out an RFP for the consultant to come in and help us with that technology. But we hope to start installing the automated meters by the end of 2019. It'll be a multi-year project.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Council President. Further questions? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Paige, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
That's all I have in my committee, is President Harden.
Thank you, Chair Brown. The next committee to come before council is the Public Service and Transportation Committee. The committee is chaired by Councilmember Remy. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, President Harden. Tonight I have ordinance number twenty-four fifty, twenty-eighteen to authorize and direct the city auditor to appropriate funds within the Special Income Tax Fund and the Streets and Highways Bond Fund to authorize the city auditor to transfer cash and appropriation between the Special Income Tax Fund and the Streets and Highways Bond Fund to authorize the city auditor to cancel the auditor certificate associated with ordinance nineteen fifty-one, twenty-eighteen, and to establish a new auditor certificate to support the expenditure contemplated in this ordinance to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into a reimbursement agreement with Ohio Health Corporation in connection with the State Route three-fifteen at North Broadway interchange project two to authorize the expenditure of up to one-point-one million six hundred thousand within the Streets and Highways Bond Fund and to declare an emergency. This ordinance seeks authorization for the Director of Public Service to enter into a reimbursement agreement with Ohio Health Corporation in the amount of one million six hundred thousand dollars for costs associated with purchasing steel necessary for the completion of State Route three-fifteen at North Broadway interchange project two. The project will be the next phase of improvements to this, to three-fifteen West-North Broadway and Olentangie River Road interchange. It encompasses the construction of a new bridge carrying State Route three-fifteen over a new southbound ramp to West-North Broadway and various improvements to State Route three-fifteen northbound exit to West-North Broadway, the intersection of Olentangie River Road and Thomas Lane and State Route three-fifteen southbound exit ramp, and the intersection of West-North Broadway and the driveway to Riverside Methodist Hospital. Previously in ordinance nineteen fifty-one, twenty-eighteen, that authorized the Director of Finance and Management to enter into contract on behalf of Department of Public Service for the purchase of steel in the amount of one-point-six million dollars for that purpose. Pursuant to the legislation, the Department of Finance and Management issued a formal invitation to bid, which generated one response. That bid exceeded the amount allocated for the aforesaid purchase by almost fifty percent, and the steel would have been delivered two months later than needed. The city elected to cancel that bid without awarding a contract and decided the city would not rebid it. In an effort to meet the current construction and completion date, it is necessary for Ohio Health to purchase the needed steel materials in advance of the city commencing construction of the project. To that end, Daimler Group, Inc., acting on behalf of Ohio Health, will issue a bid to facilitate that purchase. This legislation authorizes the execution of a reimbursement agreement between the Department of Public Service and Ohio Health to recompensate Ohio Health for costs incurred relative to its agreement with Daimler for that purchase. I'm going to turn it over to Deputy Director Kelly Scottco to explain a little bit further, please.
Thank you, Chairman Remy. Chairman Remy, President Harden, and members of council, we are putting this legislation in front of you tonight because, as the chairman said, the first bid attempt did not render a competitive cost for obtaining the, the bridge steel. The loan bid received the cost for two-point-four million dollars, and we only had a one-point-six million dollar allowance. The steel girders, bearings, and miscellaneous accessories needed to be, needed to complete the project currently have a six-to-nine-month lead time with high risk of price volatility, given the state of the market. This would potentially push the completion date of the project to November 2019. We were told a major issue with not getting multiple bidders was that public service has a standard provision that the winning bidder has to honor their price until we award it for up to a hundred and eighty days. The city engaged the Ohio Health team to solicit for another bid for the purchase and delivery of the steel by April 2019. Their process did not have the one-hundred-and-eighty-day provision, but was still evaluated using city-established criteria, and the director approved the selected vendor for the project. The team was able to get four responsive bids this time, which would meet the timeframe and stay within the allotted funds to meet the one-point-six million dollars for the bridge components. By approving this legislation this evening, this would allow State Route three-fifteen ramps to reopen approximately three months earlier than bidding the bridge components with the rest of the project. Chairman Remy, President Harden, and members, thank you, and thank you for considering this legislation this evening.
Thank you very much, Deputy Director. Are there any questions or comments? Councilmember Brown.
Director, do you know whether or not this is a company, the steel is U.S. steel, or is it foreign steel?
It's U.S. steel.
Thank you.
Are there, are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Paige, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you very much, and that's all I have tonight in Department of Public Service and Transportation.
The next committee to come before council is the Economic Development and Small Business Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Paige. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. This evening in Economic Development and Small Business, we have ordinance twenty-four ninety-two dash twenty-eighteen to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a dual-rate jobs growth incentive agreement with Davenport Aviation Incorporated for a term of up to five consecutive years in consideration of the company's proposed capital investment of seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, the retention of seventeen jobs, and the creation of ten new full-time permanent positions with an estimated annual payroll of approximately four-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars. Davenport is a homegrown Columbus small business, and is proposing to invest approximately seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in real property improvements to renovate its headquarters operation at seven-fifty-seven Adena Drive in Columbus. Also, Davenport will retain seventeen full-time jobs with an annual payroll of approximately one-point-one-three million dollars and create ten new full-time permanent positions with a cumulative estimated annual payroll of approximately four-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars to support its growth. Director, do you have any additional comments?
The only additional comment I would add is this, this business is also, was also funded by New American. So yet another piece of our attempt to diversify our business community.
Thank you, Director. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Paige, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Twenty-five sixteen dash twenty-eighteen to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into an enterprise zone agreement with E X Two Investments Limited and Car Supply Co. for a tax abatement of seventy-five percent for a period of ten consecutive years in consideration of a total proposed capital investment of approximately two-point-seven million dollars, the retention of one-hundred-and-twenty-two full-time jobs, and the creation of fifteen new full-time permanent positions with an estimated annual payroll of approximately five-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand four-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars. E X Two Investments is a real estate holding company founded in nineteen seventeen here in Columbus, and the business was formerly known as C E Car. The companies are proposing to invest a total project cost of approximately two-point-seven million dollars, which includes two-point-six million in real property improvements, and the company will again retain one-hundred-and-twenty-two full-time jobs with an annual payroll of approximately seven-point-eight million and create fifteen new net full-time permanent positions. Director, do you have any additional comments? Seeing none, are there any comments from my colleagues? I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Paige, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
President Harden, may I move to Judiciary and Court Administration?
Please.
Ordinance twenty-five sixty-two dash twenty-eighteen to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of up to one million two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand from the Collection Fees Fund to authorize the city attorney to modify and extend the contracts with Line Barger, Goggan Blair, and Sampson L O P Capital Recovery Systems Incorporated, and Appelies L L C for the collection of delinquent accounts and to declare an emergency. There are no questions or comments. I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Paige, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
That's all I have, President Harden.
Thank you, Chair Paige. The next committee to come before council is the Neighborhoods Committee. President Pro Tem Stenziano chairs that committee. President Pro Tem, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight I bring forward ordinance two-six two-four dash twenty-eighteen to authorize Columbus City Council to enter into a grant agreement with the Booteenies Community of Central Ohio to authorize an appropriation and expenditure within the Neighborhood Initiative Sum Fund and to declare an emergency. This legislation is co-sponsored by Elizabeth Brown, Councilwoman Jaisa Page, and Councilmember Emmanuel Remy. And I will have Councilmember Remy provide additional comments.
Thank you very much, President Pro Tem Stenziano, and like to thank my colleagues, Councilmember Paige and Councilmember Brown, for joining me on this important legislation. I'd like to invite Buwan Pikerell to this podium, along with Malik Moore, as we discuss this item. Tonight, I am both excited and honored as my colleagues join me in sponsoring ordinance number twenty-six twenty-four twenty-eighteen. In the city of Columbus, we have made it our mission to be a welcoming, smart, and inclusive city. This ordinance is a shining example of one of the many ways we continue to do so. In 2017, the Booteenies Community of Central Ohio, a community-based nonprofit organization, lost approximately ninety percent of its federal funding with the non-renewal of the, of its Office of Refugee Settlement, resettlement grant. This funding will, will allow the B C C O to continue operations while allowing the organization to focusing on, focus on delivering the broader services and programs needed by the community while securing other funding resources. The Ohio State University estimates there are twenty-three thousand four-hundred-and-thirty-seven Booteenies Nepali people in Central Ohio and projects its population to increase to thirty thousand over the next five years. The B C C O provides direct services via case management to nearly two thousand refugees and their families annually. This programming, training, and events impact more than five thousand people a year. I'd like to invite Buwan to say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you for this, considering this one, and we are grateful and thankful for the city for considering this one. I want to thank each one of you, and special thanks to Councilmember Remy and Councilmember Paige for visiting our community center many times and also bringing that program to the community center. And Councilmember Stenziano for coming to the community center and seeing what we are doing in the community, and for all of you, and Councilmember, Council President for encouraging and doing, involving us in the work that we are doing. And Booteenies Community of Central Ohio is established in 2014, and we started working, and again, with the loss of federal grant, we were struggling really hard. But now we are making some progress on many other grants, and this is a big stepping stone for us to continue our service that we are doing, and also a big source for other funding to be continued in the service. And thank you so much, and thank you again for their, for your support.
Namaste. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? If not, I move for passage by voice vote.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Brown? Paige? Remy?
Yes.
Stenziano? Tyson?
Abstain.
President Harden?
Yes. Ordinance passed.
Thank you very much.
That's all we have in neighborhoods. If we can move to Public Utilities?
Please.
Bring forward ordinance two-zero-six-five dash twenty-eighteen to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter a construction contract with Spinello Companies for the Allen Creek Trunk Rehabilitation Project Phase B to authorize the appropriation and transfer of seven million three-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand two-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars and seven cents from the Sanitary Sewer Reserve Fund to the Ohio Water Development Loan Fund to authorize the expenditure of up to seven million three-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand two-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars and seven cents from said fund and to authorize an amendment to the 2018 capital improvements budget. This project will provide funding to allow for the rehabilitation of the city's large diameter sanitary infrastructure. The work of this project consists of lining and internal spot repairs of reinforced concrete pipe of existing trunk sewers starting south of Ennis Road near the Bridgewater Golf Course and ending near the intersection of Allen Creek and East Main Street. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Paige, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Next, ordinance two-two-eight-three dash twenty-eighteen to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with Underground Utilities Incorporated for the Dundee Avenue Area Water Line Improvements Project to authorize the appropriation and transfer of three million forty thousand two-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars and sixty-five cents from the Water System Reserve Fund to the Water Supply Revolving Loan Account Fund to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of three million forty thousand two-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars and sixty-five cents from the Water Supply Revolving Loan Account Fund to authorize the transfer and expenditure up to two thousand within the Water General Obligation Voted Bonds Fund to provide for payment of prevailing wage services to the Department of Public Service for the Division of Water and to authorize an amendment to the 2018 capital improvements budget. The goal of this project is to replace or rehabilitate the existing six-inch and eight-inch water lines that have a high break frequency in the Eastmore Walnut Ridge Planning Area. Replacement of these water lines will improve water service, decrease burden on water maintenance operations, and reduce water loss. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Paige, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Next, ordinance two-two-nine-zero dash twenty-eighteen to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into an agreement with D L Z Ohio Incorporated for professional engineering services for the Hapcremian Water Plant Sludge Line Improvement Project for the Division of Water to authorize a transfer and expenditure up to one million two-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand six hundred dollars within the Water General Obligations Bond Fund and to amend the 2018 capital improvements budget. The Hapcremian Water Plant Sludge Disposal Line was constructed in the late nineteen seventies to provide for an economical means to transfer treatment residuals from the plant facility- transfer treatment residuals from the plant facility to the McKinley Avenue Quarry. The sludge disposal line continues to be an essential asset to the city's largest water treatment facility. The goal of this project is to replace sections of a force main known to be structurally deficient. Replacement of this section will reduce the risk of pipe failures and discharges to the surrounding environment. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
The last ordinance we have in Public Utilities is ordinance 2298 dash 2018 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to renew an existing professional engineering service agreement with Black &amp; Vtech Corporation for the Black Lick Creek Sanitary Interceptor Sewer Professional Construction Management Services Project to authorize a transfer within an expenditure of up to $2,084,507.73 from the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Bond Fund for the Black Lick Creek Sanitary Interceptor Sewer Professional Construction Management Services and to amend the 2018 capital improvements budget. The Black Lick Creek Interceptor Sewer will provide additional sewer services capacity to the rapidly expanding northeast New Albany area, which will in turn generate additional sewer revenues. The project will also provide connection points for Jefferson Township to serve customers by gravity sewers, thereby allowing abandonment of several pump stations currently in operation. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
That's all we have this evening in Utilities, President Harden. Thank you, President Pro Tem. The next committee to come before council is the Health and Human Services Committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I have ordinance number 2354 dash 2018 to authorize and direct the Board of Health to modify the purpose of the endowment fund with the Columbus Foundation, the Foundation of Active Living, to allow for funds to be used for public health, to protect, promote, and to monitor the overall health of the community and to declare an emergency. The Foundation for Active Living, a fund established at the Columbus Foundation by the City of Columbus in ordinance 1210-2008, was established to accept corporate, private donations and distribute funds to various organizations within the community for the benefit of Columbus Public Health, the Institute for Active Living, and other city programs. This ordinance is submitted as an emergency as to allow contributions to be received as soon as possible, and we were now modifying the endowment fund will enable it to include all aspects of public health that protect, promote, and monitor the overall health of the community in addition to physical activity and nutrition. We want to be able to use this fund to be able also to accept dollars from, as you mentioned, private donations, corporate, but we also are, it's important for us with the Local Food Action Plan that we begin to bring in more dollars to be able to support the work of that plan, and this will allow us the opportunity to do that. And so if there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And the final ordinance I have is 2557 dash 2018 to authorize an appropriation of $5,000 within the Neighborhood Initiative Fund and support of festivals and community events and to declare an emergency. As I mentioned earlier, we supported this, the Festival Latino for the purpose of highlighting the food action plan. This allowed the food action plan at Columbus Public Health and other key stakeholders, including Local Matters, Franklin Park Conservatory, Franklin County, the Local Food Council, and Bronzeville Growers Market, to promote the importance of healthy food to the Latino community. And further, this participation in this festival aligns with Action Plan B2 of the Local Food Action Plan, which calls for engaging those most impacted by health disparities, including low-income, African-American, Hispanic, New American, and other underrepresented communities, in developing and implementing culturally appropriate food assistance, education, nutrition, gardening, and cooking programs. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. That's all I have in my committee this evening.
Thank you, Chair Tyson. The final committee to come before council this evening is the Rules and Reference Committee. I chair that committee. We have one piece of legislation to consider, and I'm going to turn the floor over to Councilmember Remy.
Thank you very much, Council President Harden. Tonight in the Rules and Reference Committee, we have ordinance number 2539-2018 to enact, amend, and repeal various sections of Title 21 Traffic Code of the Columbus City Codes to provide for regulating the use of mobility devices. In the city of Columbus, we pride ourselves on being a smart, forward-thinking community. With daily advances in the worlds of technology and transportation, we must continue to position ourselves to welcome new and efficient modes of transportation. In addition, we must also create a balance between innovation and safety. The proposed revisions to Title 21 will create this balance. It will also provide structure for users of mobility devices as they travel along public right-ofways. This past Tuesday, September 18th, I hosted a public hearing to discuss the proposed revisions to Title 21. We heard from many different constituents, users, and concerned citizens alike. The response we had was overwhelming. To view this hearing, please visit the City of Columbus YouTube channel and select Public Safety and Transportation Committee Hearing 918-2018. In the proposed revisions, you will find the following: definition of shared mobility devices, rules for operating such devices in public right-ofway, and educating members of the public on how and where to operate shared mobility devices. It is also important to note that these rules apply to both shared and personally owned vehicles as well. Tonight, we have one speaker to speak on this topic. It's Mr. Tom Bennett. If you would come forward, state your name, the organization that you represent, and you have three minutes to address this this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Remy, President Harden, council members. I appreciate the city of Columbus has decided to tackle the problem of e-scooters that has been thrust upon us, and it definitely needs addressed. I'm the owner of Orbit City Bikes, and we sell electric bikes. The legislation attempts to legislate e-bikes as well as e-scooters. I hope this was inadvertent, but 2101.186 lumps e-bikes together with these scooters, and this is contrary to federal regulation as well as House Bill 250 that has gone through the Ohio House and Senate, and only one small amendment that affects only the manufacturers in the Senate. It's expected to be passed by the Senate tomorrow and then reconciled by the House when they are back in session. The original form passed the House 96 to nothing. The revised bill is expected to see the same acceptance. Both federal and pending state legislation treat e-bikes as bicycles as they should. E-bikes do not fit well with this legislation as written. 2101.115 should describe an electric bike as two wheels or more. We sell a lot of e-trikes and have done the same work with quads, some work with quads. These are typically for people who can no longer balance a bicycle or devices allowing one able-bodied person and one additional person to ride. As written, it describes an electric bike as a two-wheel device. 217302 states that a mobility device cannot be operated on the streets that have a speed limit above 35 mile an hour. Despite the fact that an electric bike should be lumped with bicycles, this can be very dangerous. And I get the safety aspect with the scooters, even with electric bikes, but my own scenario in the written copy that hopefully you've received of my commute, it doubles my commute. Electric bicycles should be regulated as bicycles. There are other areas where lumping them with mobility devices would affect their operation, but for brevity, I'll leave it at that. 213114 requires scooter riders to use hand signals before turning. With their narrow handlebars and small wheels, they're dangerous to ride one-handed. Perhaps they should be required to have turn signals built in. Orbit City Bikes has sold hundreds of electric bikes, which allows many of Columbus residents who otherwise couldn't commute to work or just, I'm sorry, anyways, allows people to commute to work and just get out and get fresh air and sunshine, people who otherwise couldn't. Inadvertently, this legislation will take that away from many of them.
Are there any questions and comments from my colleagues from Mr. Bennett?
Could the department just address his concerns?
Mr. Williams, Frank, are you in the, would you like to come up and talk a little bit about some of his concerns, please? Frank Williams, the administrator over this particular area, come asking him to speak this evening.
Good afternoon, evening. To Council President, to the Chair, to all council members. The items mentioned today are valid. Some of those points are valid, and as I discussed with Councilmember Remy, we will be taking a look at this going forward. However, we are in a place where we needed to move forward and establish some common sense guidelines for these types of devices. Keep it in mind that where we, how we got to this point in less than 60 days, there were some items that we've discussed across the country with many different municipalities and different approaches to these items. And if you've heard different media outlets that I've had to do interviews with, we've talked about the fact that our goal is to get as close to right as possible and keep adjusting as needed. The one thing that we found, though, is not so much of the device identification, but also trying to keep mindful of the speed limits. Some of the other areas where these items have been found in the right-ofway have been in cities that don't have necessarily the city of Columbus anomalies, whether it be traffic, right-ofway size, weather, and things of that sort. This is a newer industry that we are reacting to as best as we can, but we do not feel like we've hit the or established all of the best practices yet because the industry has not been around for very long. So we do expect to come back at some point to take a look at some of these items as we discussed today, as we get more data and more information from gentlemen like Mr. Bennett to really take these items into consideration. He did also mention House Bill 250, which is one thing we are looking at as well, but again, we don't want to come back multiple times. We would like to get as much information out there as possible. But lastly, just mentioning again, this was not so much the device identification that triggers this. It is trying to maintain the gap or the differential between speed in these types of devices.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Brown.
Mr. Williams, when you do come back, also, would you include in that report information with regards to injuries associated with the use of these devices?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Council Pro Tem Stenziano.
Thank you, Chair. Do we have a sense of when you'll come back? We've heard before, not in this subject, but other times, that we would get updates and haven't had those. And so just curious if there's a sense of how much data you need or the timeline when we would be briefed so we can make sure businesses aren't being affected and resident safety is again paramount.
Well, one thing, as far as the rules and regulations for the permitting process for talking about vendors and things like that, for the shared mobility devices, those have the ability for those rules and regulations to be flexed as we receive data. Keep it in mind that we're going to be entering into the winter season. I'm not sure how much data will impact decision-making, so it's hard for me to say right now what that timeframe would be. However, I do expect to update Council, the Chair, and Council President with any information as we get it, especially now that the permits for the devices that are out there now with the two vendors that are here, about 80% complete. So once we especially start getting that data, we plan to start extrapolating, and we've worked today with 311 and also identifying an intern to start looking at that data so that we can start making the best practice decisions as quickly as possible.
Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you, Chair Remy. So you had mentioned the House Bill that you're going to be looking at. So how will that, will that impact us in the short term? This passes, what implications will it have on what we're going to pass, looking at passing tonight?
Well, actually, it shouldn't have too much of an impact. The House Bill, Councilwoman Tyson, it classifies, it speaks more to classification. What most people are looking at right now in what we're doing is actually classifying electric bikes, especially with scooter or with regular bicycles. So that item is a little different than what we're talking about here. We're talking about mobility devices as a whole, and what triggered that is mainly the scooter dynamic that we have now. So our goal is to look at this holistically, but also take into account what happens with House Bill 250.
Okay. We'll just look forward to the updates as you continue to research this.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Williams. As always, my office will continue to take comments and concerns, and we will continue to gather this information and report back regularly to my colleagues. As Mr. Williams said, we are coming into the winter months, so the dynamic will change quite a bit. The usage will definitely fall, but we will certainly be looking at this moving forward. So I invite Mr. Bennett and anybody else that has any questions or comments to contact my office, and we'll continue to visit this subject. Are there any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Chair Remy, it looks like there's an amendment.
Oh, I apologize. I request to amend as submitted to the clerk.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Amended.
And now I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you very much, Council President Harden.
Thank you, Councilmember. Seeing no further business to come before council, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Please.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Council is adjourned. We will meet back at 6:30 for zoning. We will take non-agenda speakers momentarily.
Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal? Is there a second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
We will now go to the zoning committee. All members serve on the committee. Councilmember Tyson is Chair. We're going to ask that, we're getting the meeting started, so I'm sorry. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Councilmember, Chair Tyson, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Before beginning the zoning agenda, I'll briefly explain the rules of council as pertaining to speaking before council on zonings and variances. We permit three speakers on each side, three proponents, three opponents, and we ask that they limit their remarks to three minutes on each side, and we provide an opportunity for rebuttal from the applicant. On the advice of the city attorney's office, we ask that anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against any council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will.
I will.
I just want to acknowledge to the audience that we do not have any speaker slips this evening, so we'll just move through the agenda. So I have ordinance 2507 dash 2018 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3333.035 AR4 Apartment Residential District Use, 3325.705 Supplemental Parking Requirements, 3325.905A Maximum Lock Coverage, 3325.907AB Parking, 3325.911C Building and Separation Size, 3225.913 Maximum Floor Area Ratio, 3333.16 Fronting, 3333.255 Perimeter Yard. The Columbus City Codes were properly located at 99 East 11th Avenue to permit mixed residential development with reduced development standards in the AR4 Apartment Residential District. The applicant is Buckeye Real Estate, care of Dave Perry. The proposed use is a mixed-use development. The city department's recommendation is approval. The university area commission's recommendation is approval, 11 to 0. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. Ordinance number 2530 dash 2018 to grant a variance on the provisions of Sections 3365.01M1 Manufacturing Uses, 3312.49 Minimum Numbers of Parking Spaces Required, 3365.21B2 Height and Area Regulations of the Columbus City Codes were properly located at 2100 Courtright Road, 43232, to permit a religious facility and community center with reduced development standards in the M1 Manufacturing District. The applicant is Ahoda Islamic Center, care of Jean Cabrel. The proposed use is a religious facility and a community center. The city department's recommendation is approval, and the Midwest Area Community Collaborative Recommendation is also approval. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 2530 dash 2018 to grant a variance on the provisions The next ordinance is 2026-2018 to grant a variance on provisions of Sections 3332.037 R2F Permitted Uses, 3312.49 Minimum Numbers of Parking Spaces Required, 3321.05B12 Vision Clearance, 3325.801 Maximum Lot Coverage, 3333.805 Maximum Floor Area Ratio, 3325.809 Landscape Area and Treatment, 3332.05 Area District Lot with, with requirements, 3332.14 R2F Area District Requirements, 3332.25 Maximum Side Yards Required, 3332.26 Minimum Side Yard permitted, and 3332.27 Rear Yard of Columbus City Codes with property located at 310 312 East Hudson Street to permit a building containing a 1,728 square foot eating and drinking establishment with a 420 square foot accessory patio and a single unit, separate single unit dwelling on the same lot with reduced development standards in the R2F Residential District. The applicant is MJ MJ Property Limited, care of John Lynch. The proposed use is an eating and drinking establishment and single unit dwelling. The City Department's recommendation is approval. The University Air Commission's recommendation, recommendation is approval, 9 to 7. If there are no questions or counsel from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remi, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 2373 point, 2373-2018 to rezone 5586 Riverside Drive, being 20.25 acres located at the east side of Riverside Drive, 1,250 feet south of Cranston Drive from RR Rule District to PUD 6 Plan Unit Development District. The applicant is Epcun, Epcun Communities, Inc., care of Michael Shannon. The proposed use is a single unit residential development. The City Department's recommendation is disapproval, and the Northwest, Northwest Civic Association's recommendation is approval for 9 to 0. Before we move to either for passage on this legislation, I do want to hear from our city in regards to why we had a 9 to 0, not, why we had a disapproval.
The site is developed with five single unit dwellings, and the applicant is requesting the PUD 6 Plan Unit Development District to prevent the development of a single unit residential subdivision containing 81 units with 3.6 acres of open space. The site is within the boundaries of this Northwest Plan, which recommends low-density residential land uses for this location. The plan also encourages connectivity between developments and an interconnected series of streets, sidewalks, and paths. The development text, the development text and plan includes commitments to specific development standards addressing vehicular access, landscaping, and screening, building materials, refuse collection, and graphics provisions. While the request is compatible with Northwest Plan's recommendation for low-density residential land uses and includes substantial preservation of natural resources, the applicant does not agree to staff's request to construct street stubs to the north and south that provide vehicular and pedestrian connectivity in the event that adjacent properties redevelop as recommended by the Northwest, Northwest Plan. Therefore, City's Department's recommendation is for disapproval. Be happy to answer any additional questions.
Thank you. And I probably should ask for, well, ask for the staff presentation now and have the applicant come up and just share his statement based upon the disapproval for the city.
President Harden, Chairperson Tyson, Congresswoman Page, I heard earlier. Pleasure to be here this evening on behalf of Epcun. They are truly the pioneers in empty nester development. This product is a standalone, single-family product that goes from 350 to 550,000 in price. We did get unanimous approval of the NWCA contingent on us making our neighbors, joining neighbors happy, both to the north and the south. As a result of that, we made several modifications to our text, including increased buffering. We changed the site plan, we moved units away from the perimeter, we changed our open space, we changed the location of our clubhouse to make it an entrance feature. The one thing, however, the neighbors were strident about in opposition was any connectivity to the property to the north or the property to the south. In this particular instance, we are a PUD, it's 4.01 units to the acre. We are on private streets with platted lots. To the south right now, it's proposed to be a similar development by Romanelli and Hughes, but that area plan, in addition to allowing low-density residential, allows office. We think that's potentially an incompatible use that we're concerned about. We met with planning on numerous occasions, both before and after the Development Commission meeting, and could not reach consensus on providing that connectivity. If you were to look at our site plan and that of the Romanelli and Hughes project, you would see that in this particular case, connectivity doesn't make a whole lot of sense because you're connecting two standalone, private developments whose number one amenity is security and privacy on private streets. Their entrances are about 1,000 feet apart. The only way that you could use the connectivity as proposed would be to drive up to the east, come all the way back down, and go out to the other condos. Access road didn't make sense from that standpoint, and most importantly, NWCA's approval was conditioned on happy neighbors, both north and south, and so that was a commitment we had to make to them not to provide the connectivity.
And thank you. I just wanted to, and I reiterate this, that I know that, from my understanding, is that the Development Commission did ask you to go and make that, to go back and speak with the staff for the city in regards to connectivity. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And you did go?
Absolutely.
Back and talk with the staff of the city?
And Kelsey was involved in those meetings with planning, the conference calls and the meetings. We actually got to the point where we had agreed, thanks to her efforts to reciprocal easements, to provide for the connectivity in the future if both property owners wanted it, but planning came back and they wanted additional access points, they wanted us to eliminate an emergency access that we had, and the client basically just couldn't acquiesce to that. And finally, I believe in your discussions with planning, you may have been told that this is not a requirement that's actually code-driven, and there was some discussion about maybe changing that in the future with the assistance of your office, and I know I've talked with Mark Travillis in that regard, but it's my understanding that that would not be applied to our development to the extent it's not in the code now. C2P2 was passed, but not until July 15th that encourages connectivity, and we've been in the queue since February and worked very, very hard to have no opposition here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon. And I do want to have, I, because I did meet, because whenever this, just like what, if I have a situation where even if it is a 9 to 7 vote, I'm still going to reach out because it's so close to ask who, what was, why did seven commissioners decide that they didn't want to support the legislation? I want to hear that. And in this, in the same case, I also want to always hear if the staff says they do not support whether zoning, I want to hear from the staff as to why that is the case. And so I did have, meet with, with Mark, and so I'm going now ask Mark to make some comments based upon the whole issue around connectivity.
Sure. Thank you, Committee Chair Tyson, members of council, Mark Travillis, I'm the Assistant Administrator with the Planning Division. And as you know, planning reviews, rezonings, and variances for consistent, consistency with adopted plans, and as Kelsey explained, we, this site falls within the area of the Northwest Plan that was adopted in 2016, and indeed, it recommends residential and office uses, as Mike mentioned. And so we, we were, we are supportive of the use and of the density, and at the time the zoning came in, we had some requests as it related to the site plan itself and open space and the connectivity issue. And as Mike indicated, there were several revisions that were made to the site plan. The one remaining issue was the, the connectivity. We had wanted a stub street to the north and a stub street to the south, and it is, it's a planning best, it's recommended in the plan, and it is a planning best practice because it results in the diffusion of traffic, less, less traffic on arterial streets, it allows for bicycle and pedestrian connectivity between developments, and we think that moving forward, that it's important for the city to establish connectivity as new developments occur. So, but again, generally, we're supportive of the use and the density. We recognize the changes that were made to the site plan. It's just that, really, that connectivity issue that we thought was important enough for us to withhold our support on this case. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mark. And it was important that I, that Mark was here today to share that because moving forward, what we're, we want to do, and I've had a conversation with Director Masser, and that we really do want to have this policy and that, so between Director Masser, will probably help to lead this, because that's from Building and Zoning Services, but certainly public safety, BZA, development, public service, we need to, those departments need to all come together so that there can be this policy, even moving forward, so that our developers know for us the importance of that connectivity and for, because it does affect all those different departments. And so because I think that we had not had that, those discussions and making this more policy as opposed to, you know, being, just asking people to do it, that it becomes more for all the developers to know that this is something that's very important for the City of Columbus, and we need them to work with us to be able to do that. And that's why we need to have this presentation this evening, so they'll know how serious we are about this particular policy. And so we did have all the conversations. I made sure that Michael spoke with the department, and as they committed to in the Development Commission, I'm also making sure that we're going to have conversations with the Development Commission to ensure that when they say it's subject to something, that it's written in the documents that says that it is subject to something happening so that, so that that does happen too. So if there, and Michael, anything else you would like to say, Attorney Shan?
Just very briefly, thank you, President Harden, Chairperson Tyson. I just like to point out that we do provide for pedestrian connectivity. We've got a 60-foot easement that provides the pedestrian access on Riverside Drive. Thank you for your stewardship on this zoning matter. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from my colleagues? Councilmember Mitchell Brown?
Thank you, Councilwoman Tyson. Mike, are you saying there's people can walk through, just can't have cars?
That's correct, sir.
Right?
Yes, sir.
And the rationale for that is?
We are 80 single-family platted units, all on a private street, with the main amenity being security and privacy. To our south is proposed a virtually identical development by Romanelli and Hughes, although it is more upscale. It's 500 to 750,000. They share the same concerns about the connectivity. Again, we've got 80 units at four to the acre. They're down to three units to the acre with some healthy green space. So again, if this were a single-family subdivision, I've done the connectivity as a matter of practice through my 30 years in practice. This is a unique situation with a PUD that has private streets, and the jurisdiction for Riverside was ODOT, and we've complied with their traffic study. We're going to work on southbound left-hand internal lanes in conjunction with the property owner to the south, but the actual property owner to the south into the north do not want this connectivity. That's the main reason, to fulfill my obligation to the Northwest Civic Association.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Brown. And again, we will start working with the policy, so that's, that that will be really, that's going to be very important moving forward. So thank you. I want to thank the staff for your hard work on this and certainly working with them and being here to share your thoughts, because we do care about what you think, your thoughts and your work, because you're professionals also. So thank you. There are no questions or counsel, move for passage.
Second.
Oh, I amended a thing. Let me see. Yes. First of all, I move to amend as submitted to the clerk.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remi, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. Now move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remi, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you very much.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remi, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.